Call the meeting to order, everyone please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. May I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Burke, here. Mr. Pavulovich?
Here.
And Mr. Secalle?
Here. This time, the meeting is open to the public for comment for items that are on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to our committee reports. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
How are you? Do you have any committee reports this evening?
I have two, unless you have any.
I do not.
Okay. I attended the rec department meeting. They're just wrapping up their winter sports, getting ready for spring. And good to hear on my end is they're organizing more summer camps. So they're working on all of that and they'll be getting back to us soon. And I understand there's still some waiting time for the pool rates and things to that effect. Trying to come up with different things to keep the cost down, so we'll see what happens there. I also covered the middle school FSA meeting. I understand the TRPS was a big success and everybody's happy within the way it went. I think this Thursday's their student feedback, so we'll get to hear more about that. I believe Mr. Decorte has sent out some testing dates when the... To all the parents for the sixth grade interview, the map testing, and of course, the parks. And they're also, what I thought was very interesting, they're looking, their tech club is going to start a new club that is going to be hands-on of creating new things, which rightfully so, it's going to be called the Maker Club. So I look forward actually to seeing how far they get with that and what they invent. And a couple of dates they wanted to remind you, number one, in spring ahead is Sunday. Don't forget that. On the 21st of March is going to be the Student Faculty Challenge. And May 26th is going to be the Career Day for the seventh and eighth graders. So good luck to all of those folks.
Thank you. And I also, I understand, I think I got an email today that the pool registration is now open.
Oh, it's open. There you go.
So if you go to the Cedar Grove website, the, all the information on the... I didn't look at it, but all the information on the new fees and everything should be there if they're taking registrations already. Mrs. Burke, anything?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, so we'll move on. We have, it's budget season, as everybody is probably aware of. And we will be approving a tentative budget this evening. And for all our meetings between now and our budget hearing, which is going to be on April 26th, we're going to have presentations to the board regarding different aspects of our budget. And tonight, we're going to have two presentations, special education and technology. Mr. Kenny, are you going to be first?
I wish so.
Okay, so we have Chris Kenny here, who's our Director of Special Education, to present to us on our special education, our special services budget for 2016-2017 school year. Welcome, Mr. Kenny.
Thank you very much. Should put on my eyeglass so I can see what I'm talking about here. All right. Appreciate the time tonight, what we're going to be talking about. Again, not to reiterate, is the special education, special services budget for the 2016-17 school year. I preface it always by saying the special education budget, as much as we say it's anticipated, it's also fluid for, you know, at any given time, a student can register for, you know, enrollment in the Cedar Grove Public Schools. They could have substantial needs to where they cannot be met within the public school system, so therefore, we need to look for a private school placement. We would have to, by law, afford them that free and appropriate public education. So again, keeping that in mind, this is our anticipated special services budget. So the breakdown of the budget, in essence, comes down to several different categories. You have instructional costs, which are included, teacher salaries, different supplies. You see the number there as a subtotal of 1.780 million, an increase of 126,000. I'll explain about some of the reasons for the increase on the slides getting on further down in the presentation. The added district tuitions, those are placements for private schools for the disabled, the VOTECs, and other local education agencies that we send students to. That's another subsection of the budget, as it's composed with a subtotal of 2.656, with a decrease of 51,000. Transportation, obviously, if you're sending a student to a, another public school, a VOTEC, or a private school for the disabled, again, you have to afford them the transportation to get there. As we've put into the budget, another subtotal around 600,000. And that is the same as last year, as we currently do not have any current rates going forward if there's an increase. Related and extraordinary services. Related services, including contracted service providers, those are people that we hire outside of our regular employees, and our salaried employees that provide such things as occupational therapy, physical therapy, services such as teacher of the deaf, feeding therapy for some of the younger kids that still need those particular skills to develop. Job coaching for some of our older kids, particularly in our life skills program up at the high school. Again, these are related and extraordinary services for a subtotal of 1.7, with an increase of 80,000. Child study team services include the salaries of those that provide that particular service, such as school psychologists, learning consultants, myself, the supplies associated with that, the upkeep of the IEP direct system that we're currently using. There is a maintenance fee for that every year, the subtotal being 418,000. So as we get to some of the reasons for increase, as you've seen in the previous slide, there are salary increases. You know, every year, salaries go up a certain percentage, so that attributes to the instructional costs going up, as well as the additional part-time LLD teacher, which is currently hired as well for part of this year. So those are the salary increases and the additional cost for that attribute to our instructional cost increase. Related and extraordinary services are an increase in services needed. So as students in the IEPs are developed, we have plans that are developed where services need to be up, whether it's a session of PT here, additional speech services. That's been big now going forward. This year, we've seen a lot more students come in with the need, especially on a younger age, for additional speech services. We have currently enrolled, sorry, not enrolled, but employed three speech therapists on our staff, but we also contract out speech, so we've seen an increase this year. So that's going to attribute to some cost or increase for those related services as well. So just to break down, summary. You have your different categories there for a budget total of 6.5 million, 959,000. I'll take any questions now, if anybody has any. Again, as I preface that before, it's always fluid because you don't know from year to year who's moving in, who's moving out. And some of the IEPs aren't developed as of yet, you know? It's always tough doing a budget anticipated when you do have IEPs, individual education plans, for students still being developed in the spring, which could bring about, whether it's a change in placement, whether it's a student coming back into district that's been out of district and the team decides that he or she is ready to come back in. That's really a determination of the IEP team, so... Yes, sir?
Are we taking public questions on the budget then? I mean, you can, we generally don't do that, we have a budget hearing for that, but if you'd like to, if you have a question...
Maybe it's a math issue on my end, but the last year's special ed was 5,225. It just had 6,595. That's a difference of 1,370, but if you started out saying 8,260,000.
That was just on one section.
One section.
Oh, sorry.
And I, actually, that was part of my question. On this slide, child study team costs, 429,835. But on the breakdown sheet, it says it's 418,555. There.
All right, so that was the old, unfortunately, it should have been the 429 here. These are the numbers.
Right, so I was going to say, was it flat, but then when I saw on that one?
Right, there is a slight increase then there, but that was my mistake, sorry about that.
Was your question answered?
Yes.
So as it stands today, again, I know, I understand it's fluid, as it stands today, we're talking about basically 1.3 lien increase from last year?
I can't speak on last year per se, but maybe...
Do you know what the number was on special ed budget for last year?
And keep in mind, this year, we've had to add six paraprofessionals that were not in last year's budget that are in this budget, as well as the...
1516, the budget for 1516 was 6,463, and this is going to 6,595.
Okay.
In 2014-15, it was 5,800,000. That's, we had a significant increase between 1415 and 1516.
So I guess the way I reported it last year was different from the way I'm reporting it this year. You have to go off of the numbers that she has.
So about $130,000 more, do you?
That balances.
Okay.
Thank you, that clarified.
Any further questions for Mr. Kenny, the board?
No, not at this point. Thank you, thank you for putting that together.
And of course, we're going to ask you back here during our budget hearing for it to field any questions on special education at that time, give you a CBA. Next, we have Jim Walsh, who is going to give us the overview of the technology budget for the 2015, I'm sorry, 2016-2017 school year. Good evening, Mr. Walsh.
Good evening. Let me just get this going and we'll be all set. Sorry, I have my back to you guys. So tonight, we're going to present the technology budget for 2016-17. We left it in the display format pretty much the way we showed it to you last year. So we started out with our Gen Ed computers for K through 12. Chromebooks were the big thing, and are the big thing. We've added a lot of them to the district. We plan on adding 60 more Chromebooks for each building this coming year. And then our Dell workstations, we pretty much are on a five-year rotation plan, and we have approximately 500, 550 workstations now, and we plan to replace about 90 to 100 of them. Last year, we spoke about servers. Most of our servers have been virtualized, which is just actually a rack of big servers and drive arrays. But one of our servers, which we thought we were going to replace last year, we didn't have to, but we do have to probably replace it this year. It's getting up there in age, and that's our student management server. That one can't be virtualized, that has to be its own metal box, and that's just because of the way the Oracle licensing works out. If we were to put it in a virtual server, we would be spending about $50,000 for the Oracle because it counts all the processors in the whole virtual stack, not just the machine we build for it. So that has to stay in its own separate server, and that's our Genesis software. And then we have various software licenses and services. The media center has different databases and references. That runs about $3,000 a year. Our CEPR filter, which is our content filter, and then our trouble ticket software, which the staff uses to report any software hardware breakdowns. Network tracker, which we use to follow and get early reporting on any network issues. And then Google Apps for Education, which is what you see up there, GAF replication. So we have a service to back up all the Google Apps for Education mail. And then we also use a service called Green Shutdown from the same company called SIF Sync. And those two services, what they do is they shut off all our computers at night. We pick the time to shut them off. And we like to leave them on after school to do a lot of updates or anything like that. So we schedule our operating system updates after school hours, but then try to shut the computers down by 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock at night, depending on if there's any extra activities going on. We used to keep it fairly early, and then we'd find somebody would be doing a presentation or something and the computer would all of a sudden shut down, so that changes. But that green shutdown saves us a lot of money in the electricity a year just to making sure all the computers are shut down each night. And then the SIF Sync, what that does is it ties in with our Genesis student management software, and so as an office registers a student, it automatically puts them into our network, into what's called active directory. So it gives them a network account, it puts them into the correct organizational unit, gives them a password, all in one step as they're entered into Genesis. Well, not one step, at 6 o'clock that evening, the SIF Sync runs, and their email accounts are created, or their Google accounts are created, their network accounts are created, and that's all using the SIF Sync software. Then we have various server hardware and support contracts. That's primarily with Dell. We keep those going on our machines. We, antivirus licenses will be projected to be a little lower this year because we've added a lot of Chromebooks, and we'll start phasing a little bit of our workstations out as we have more and more Chromebooks, and the Chromebooks don't need antivirus licenses. And then our VMware, which is what our virtual stacks are made up of, and our Cisco support. And then also our VMware backup, our data replication, because we replicate the data to... We back it up to a drive array in the high school. We replicate it to a drive array at one of the other schools, and then we also do a cloud backup of all of our data. And then we also maintain the school TV station, channel 76. We plan on adding some more wireless access points. Last year, I told you, we added, I think, 25 near the end of last school season. With more and more Chromebooks and more and more bring your own devices, and all of the testing we're doing with Park and all, a lot of that's on our Chromebooks. We're trying to get to where every room in the enterprise has a wireless access point. Now, that's a fancy word for an antenna. So we're going to add 25 more antennas. We have a campus-wide wireless system. It's all managed one central location. It doesn't matter if you're in this building, you're connected to the Wi-Fi. You walk into one of the other buildings, you're just automatically connected to the Wi-Fi. We control it for school-owned equipment, and then we also control it for guest access, that we throttle down the bandwidth a little bit for that, but we do allow students to have bring your own devices also. And along with those wireless access points, we have to put wire runs so they can be connected back to the network. Our general hardware expenses, each building has what's called an MDF, and the bigger buildings have IDF, so those are wiring closets. So we will be upgrading most of our border routers, which are switches in each building that do all the routing between the enterprise, and we'll be upgrading a few of the IDF switches also. Those are all Cisco switches, and they're just getting to the point where we start replacing them before there's a failure. We'd rather have it replaced. As Cisco's fading out support on a particular switch, we like to replace it instead of waiting for an emergency to happen and we have a whole building out. Each year, we do have some printers that go just because of age. Our laser toner is, over the years, has gotten way down. It's a high number of $18,000, but back when I started in the district, we were spending about $27,000 for toner. What we're finding more and more, as we're using the Google Apps for Education, and more things are just digital, the teachers don't have the need for, to see printed material from the students. Quite a lot of our students use what's called Google Classroom, and the work is handed out to the students through Google Classroom. They do their work in Google Classroom, and the teacher can grade it right from Google Classroom, so there's no need for printing every single item that they would hand into a teacher. Smartboards and smartboard projector replacements. We just, we have about 100 smartboard or from Smart, the company, devices. We replace a handful of them every year. They just go bad because of age. They're touchscreen devices, the sensors go bad, there's not an economical way to repair them. Once the board gets to be three, four, five years old, it ends up needing a replacement. What has come up is we have had to start replacing or projector repair. Smart, over the last five or six years, used about four different styles of arms, like the arm that's over that board there and the projector. All the projectors were supplied by Mitsubishi. Last year, Mitsubishi got out of the projector business, and there are no retrofit kits for it. So either you send out what's broke and have it fixed at quite a high amount of money with only a 90-day warranty, or you end up replacing the whole arm and projector to a new projector. So that's where we have an item in there for new projectors also. We plan on adding a few more items to the TV station and video equipment, which will help in filming here, and then Joe's been working in the buildings, helping them with some of the video projects that the teachers are doing in the schools there. And then we have just unanticipated hardware and software, if things break, that we weren't really planning on it breaking. So we have some budget money anticipated for that. So our breakdown is on our general education computers, 108,000. Our district servers, 22,000. 34.5 for software licenses and services, 20,000 for wireless, and then 89,1500 for general hardware and software, for a budget total of 273,700. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. Any questions?
Just the same question, maybe, when I can answer what the budget was, what we had budgeted last year for...
I don't have it, Jim's...
Was it 250 something?
I believe it was about two, I think it's up about $12,000, and I think that was between items we're anticipating buying with Park and for smartboards. They're going fast.
I actually have two questions for you. So if we use the copiers as printers, that toner is included in those contracts, right? Isn't the...
The toner for the printers, I don't know, it doesn't hit my...
Of the copiers.
I believe it's in the contract with the copiers.
Right, right. So the more that we encourage and set up people to be able to print to the copiers, that'll help us with the toner cost, and that might be part of...
I believe, and all of our, all of our copiers are connected to the network as printers.
Right.
That's, the school deals with the copier.
Right, yeah.
Contract, so I haven't really seen the toner on that, but we're working diligently to keep the toner built in.
Right, the consumables with the copiers typically is covered by the contract. So the more they print to the copiers, the better off we are anyway. And then the other thing with the smartboard projectors, at the FSA meetings at the elementary level, there's a lot of talk about the FSA's helping to fund replacing the bulbs. And so my question is, is in that 18,000, do we have bulb replacement budgeted as well?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just wanted to know.
And then eight school also budgets for some bulb money.
Right, yes.
When that's used up, it's in our smartboard projector budget. And the good thing is the bulbs have started to come down a little in price. They were about $500 a bulb before, now they run, depending on the model, $350 to $400 a bulb. You know, that, when we can just replace bulbs, we're in good shape. When we have to replace a projector and an arm, we're about a $2,000 replacement.
Right.
We have to replace a board, just the board itself is $1,000. And then depending on the age of the projector and the arm, we start weighing, because the new version of the smartboards pretty much look like your flat-screen TV at home. We're demoing two of them right now. We have one in the middle school and one in the high school. But those right now are at about a $5,000 price tag as a special upgrade price. So we're not going to have a whole lot of them real quick.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Both of you for coming tonight, and we'll look forward to our budget hearing and you guys coming back to field any questions from the public at that time.
Just I, when we were talking about committee reports, we did have our first finance committee meeting last Thursday, and it was really kind of the first round of looking at the budget submitted and really the different options that we were able to produce for the tentative budget this week. But we'll continue those discussions as these presentations happen as well. So the work is really just in the initial phases.
Thank you. I know this is a crazy time of year, and the finance committee works very hard, so thank you for all your efforts in getting that together. Okay, we're going to move on the agenda. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, under minutes, may I have a motion for, excuse me, items B1 and B2. B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of February 23rd, 2016. And B2 is a motion to approve the Board Secretary certification to the Board of Education pursuant to the administrative code that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation in violation of the code. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Secalle?
Yes. Under business, may I have a motion for items, I'm sorry, under, yeah, under business, for items B3 through B12. B3 is a motion to approve the Target Take Charge of Education donation and the amount set forth therein to Cedar Grove High School, which will be used to purchase gift cards for the CGHS Student of the Month Award recipients. B4 is a motion to approve the Venture Capital Gen Youth Foundation Grant Award, the amount set forth therein to improve the health and wellness, health and wellness awareness at Cedar Grove High School. B5 is a motion to approve the paying of cost for the AP exams set forth therein for student number 201, 607, 609, 47. B6 is a motion to approve the purchase of 60 armchair desks at the price set forth therein from Hertz Furniture Systems. B7 is the budget resolution. And it says, be it resolved that the tentative budget, annual district budget statement and supporting documentation for the 2016-2017 school year be submitted for approval, excuse me, to the Essex County Superintendent of Schools. And the resolution goes on to list the budget with the local, the tentative budget with the local tax levy would be, and also that it's resolved that our public hearing will be held on April 26th, 2016, here at 8:00 PM in the North End Elementary School Media Center. B8 is a motion to approve Melick Tully and Associates proposal to perform environmental consultation and oversight at Cedar Grove High School during construction of the turf field. Fees are set forth therein, and approval of this motion is contingent on the successful awarding of the Cedar Grove High School construction project. B9 is a motion to acknowledge that the Cedar Grove Board of Education requested and has received bid proposals on March 8th, 2016, on file in the Board Office from the companies set forth therein for removal and disposal of asbestos-containing materials in Cedar Grove High School Phase 1, March 21st to March, 21st, 2016 to April 3rd, 2016 project. Approval of this motion is contingent on the successful awarding of the Cedar Grove High School construction project. B10 is a motion to acknowledge that the Cedar Grove Board of Education requested and has reviewed bid proposals received on March 8th, 2016, on file in the Board of Education Office from the companies listed therein for the removal and disposal of asbestos-containing materials in the North End Elementary School, approximately 3,400... thirty-four hundred square feet. Approval of this motion is contingent on the successful awarding of the North End School Construction Project. B eleven is a motion to acknowledge that the Cedar Grove Board of Education requested and has reviewed bid proposals received on March eighth, two thousand sixteen, on file in the Board of Education Office from the companies listed therein for the removal and disposal of asbestos-containing materials in South End Elementary School, approximately thirty, three thousand one hundred and fifty square feet. Approval of this motion is contingent on the successful awarding of the, that should say, South End School Construction Project. And B twelve is a motion to approve Lurch, Vinci, and Higgins LLP proposal to perform services as set forth therein in connection with the anticipated sale of fourteen million eight hundred eighty-four thousand dollars in school bonds. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes. From the Office of the Superintendent of Schools, under Personnel, may I have a motion for, well, first let me say that we're going to eliminate S seven from the agenda, so I'll ask for a motion for items S one through S six, and then we'll take care of the rest of the S items after that. May I have a motion for S one through S six, which is, S one is a motion to affirm the Superintendent's report on HIB from February twenty-third, two thousand sixteen. S two is a motion to retroactively approve the three-year collective bargaining agreement between the Cedar Grove Board of Education and the Cedar Grove Administrators Association. S three is a motion to approve the Elementary and Secondary Education Act Accountability Action Plan, two thousand fifteen participation rate for the Cedar Grove High School. S four is a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Michelle Zanella, high school English teacher, effective June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. And S five is a motion to, I'm sorry, S five is a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Paul Carew, LRP part-time custodian, effective March eighteenth, two thousand sixteen. And S six is a motion to approve Peter Vilarde as volunteer softball coach for the two thousand sixteen season. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes. May I have a motion for S eight through S thirteen? S eight is a motion to reimburse the school-based volunteers as set forth in that item. And S nine is a motion to approve those listed in that item as school volunteers. S ten is a motion to approve the school calendar for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year, and let me just say to that item that if we approve the calendar, we'll get it out to the, on the website immediately, and out to the parents, correct? S eleven is a motion to authorize attendance at the events as set forth in S eleven. S twelve is a motion to approve the student set forth in that item for classroom observation. And S thirteen is a motion to approve the leave of absence for the employee as set forth in S thirteen. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes. Under curriculum, may I have a motion for items S fourteen and S fifteen? S fourteen is a motion to approve curriculum writing for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year as set forth therein. And S fifteen is a motion to approve the revised and realigned curricula for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year as set forth in that item. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes. At this time, the meeting is open to the public for comment for items that are either on or off the agenda. Step her out. Welcome back.
John Grobich, Five Woodside Road, Cedar Grove. A couple of questions. On the website, is the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen budget, is that on the website? I did a quick look, I didn't spend hours at it.
Yes, it is.
I'll look harder.
Okay.
Budget cap still at two percent? And is that based on the tax levy number, the two percent?
Two percent, yes. We, two percent tax levy cap.
And that's on the, on the tax levy portion of...
The general fund tax levy.
Yeah. Where would I find, before I go there, one thing I noticed, having been our board member many years ago, roll call and attendees, we always had that in, on the minutes. Is there any reason why that has been dropped off the minutes?
It'll say down at the bottom, vote five zero or three zero, and if someone...
That's a vote on the issues, I understand that, but on the roll call, who attended and who did not attend?
They're always listed on the beginning of the meeting minutes that when I do the...
The minutes? Okay. Maybe it's because I'm only looking at the agenda.
Yes.
Okay, I'll, thank you. On the Superintendent's report, I was not here for that meeting, but I did look at what I think was the presentation that's on site, and I'm guessing that your report was about how we scored with the state in different areas. Is that what it was?
I'm not sure regarding which.
Well, it sounded like there was an approval for the Superintendent's report on HIB for in March February.
Well, that was for the last meeting. In executive session, we talk about any investigations, confidential investigations that have gone on across the district.
Oh, that, that was the matter, that was the subject matter of the Superintendent's report for February twenty-third?
It wasn't, that wasn't, we didn't approve the Superintendent's report. We approved the Superintendent's report on harassment, intimidation, and bullying, two separate, two separate things. So Mr. Featherman delivers his Superintendent's report once a month, that gets also listed on the, on the website, and we approved that, you know, in our, in our agenda, but what we approved tonight was the confidential HIB report.
Going, going back then to the one that was in, I guess, your report on HIB, which was part of a public presentation. There were scores on the bottom that explained how the state scored in different areas. And I was just wondering, it says that the maximum score is a seventy-eight that you can get.
Right.
And I think one year we got a sixty, another year we got a sixty-three, and I have a point of reference for what's an A, a B, a C, or a D. What's failure? I mean, is it fifty a failure? Can you, if you'd like me on it?
Well, it's not pass foul, but I mean, if you do a percentage out of seventy-eight, you know, if you're scoring sixty out of seventy-eight, I mean, what is that? I mean, you probably have a percentage offhand.
Now, in the end, I'm going to corner, so I went the...
Sure, yeah, yes.
Think of the three being exceeding what the state is requiring. So if you have seventy-eights getting all threes, that's a seventy-eight, that's like getting above a hundred percent almost. So twos, if you scored twos on everything, which is met the requirements of what the state, I believe it's sixteen categories, if you're getting a sixteen times, excuse me, did my math there? Six, twenty, sixteen, twenty-six categories, if you get a three on everything, you get a score of a seventy-eight. But that's if you exceed, exceeding all those expectations.
And this is a self-assessment. We're not, the state doesn't come in...
Self-assess, but the state informs it.
Right, but they don't come in and check all those things. We check all those things ourselves.
At any time they can.
They can, but, but that score is generated internally.
Right, but if you really want to look at, if you met all the expectations, you got a fifty-two, twenty-six times two, a fifty-two is a, you met the expectations. Thank you, that gives me some perspective at least. In looking at the budget, where do I find, where are the legal expenses placed? Are they in the general administration?
It's under account, I'm sorry, account number eleven two thirty. It says then three thirty-one or three thirty-two, with a separate line that says legal.
Eleven two thirty, but would that be, when I'm looking at presentations that are summarized, would that be general administration or, or what's the other one?
It is general.
It is general?
It's general.
Okay, that's where I pointed the thing. So it's not the school administration?
No, that's...
Okay. And on the issue at hand, the one that I was here for last week, do we know, or can we find out what the legal expense has been to date on that issue?
Um...
Can there be accounting on it?
Is there, is there some, I, what I can do is, I can, I can talk to our legal team and find out what it is that we can say on that issue, what we, what we get, so we'll, I'll check into it for you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Okay, great. Announcement of future meetings. Our next meeting is March twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, here in the North End Media Center. Seven PM executive session, eight PM regular meeting. And the meeting following that is April twelfth, North End Media Center, seven PM for executive session, eight PM for the regular meeting. Is Board of any final comments this evening? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending.